I mean, I think it was in the eighties.
I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District for May 24th, 2021, if everyone would please stand.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this board, this port, and the people who depend upon it. We ask you to guide this board in their decisions that they are for the good of the public we serve. We ask you in your name, amen.
Mr. Darbone will leave us in the pledge.
I make a motion to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comment procedure, the board encourages public comments and questions regarding all agenda items. Persons wishing to do so should complete a speaker's card, which is at the entrance to the boardroom. When speaking or asking a question on an agenda item, one should, in addition to completing the card, come to the microphone, be recognized, provide your name, address, and phone number. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The first item of business is approval of the April 26, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McLeary moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carried. Next, we have a presentation from the COO of Cameron LNG, Mr. Dan Collins.
Good evening. To the board members, Mr. Ringel, Mrs. Self, thank you for this opportunity to talk with you briefly about Cameron LNG. Actually, I brought with me some material that really describes how we've established Cameron LNG as a reasonable and prudent operator. And in particular, you'll find areas that are relevant to the discussion that we have before the board around our emergency response and what we call our license to operate, which talks about our environmental stewardship and our community. Cameron LNG, as you know, we've been around as a regas facility since the mid-2000s. And more recently, we've added liquefaction capability in a form of three LNG trains. Those trains were under construction from 2014 to 2020, at which time we became, all three trains became commercial operations. We really value the relationship that we've developed with the Harbor and Terminal District. Over that time, our safety record has been second to none. We've recently been awarded the Safe Project Award over that period from 2014 to 2020, where we amassed over 89 million man-hours without a lost time incident. Those work hours didn't happen by accident, no pun intended, but really by our commitment to safety. And I welcome, you know, the had the board over to our facility for a tour if they would like. We also have built a technology center that we're actually hosting the STEM programs and whatnot. It's a 3D model of our plant that really gives you a really good flavor of our operation. What you hear when you come to Cameron LNG, safety is not our priority. Safety is a core value. Priorities change. Your core values are who you are and how you operate, and it's foundational to everything we do. What you'll see in our values, we call safety above all. But when you look at what we call our culture wheel that defines those core values, safety is on the bottom. And you would say, well, why is that? That's because safety is foundational to everything we do. What I tell everyone that joins Cameron LNG, no business objective is so important, it'll be accomplished at the sacrifice of safety, full stop. And that's how we've achieved the safety records we have. We also have an emergency response team that's as made up of a core workforce. They go through rigorous training. We actually use the Texas A&amp;M, being a Louisiana tech grad myself, you know, I have to, but at any rate, they go to Texas A&amp;M Fire School to be prepared. And we periodically do drills throughout the year to ensure that we're prepared to protect not just our facility and our people, but also the environment. With regard to, we also carry quite a bit of insurance. We carry over $200 million in casualty insurance. We're actually backed by some really strong shareholders. Many of you all will be familiar with Sempra Energy. That's our majority shareholder. But we also have four other shareholders, Mitsubishi, Total, Mitsui, and NYK, that are all deep LNG experience that we're financially backed by, as well as our long-term contracts with our customers. So I share all that with you to say that with Cameron LNG, when I'm describing our commitment to protecting the environment, the expression I use with the workforce is, we don't inherit the environment from our parents. We borrow it from our children. And as such, we respect that obligation to protect the environment in everything we do. So I'll leave that with you. I'm going to leave these documentation with you that just talks about our management system on how we built our fundamental systems, processes, and procedure. It talks about our training and competency programs that we train all of our operators with to ensure that we can keep the hydrocarbon in the kit. And then around our social responsibility, I've got a community impact report that I'll leave that with you so that you can learn a little bit more about Cameron LNG. And again, if the board members are interested in coming out to Cameron LNG for a tour, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next submission, submission 2021-17, authorizing the executive director to amend the ground lease agreement with Cameron LNG to allow for reduction in the amount of the required letter of credit. Mr. Self?
Yes, Mr. President. In 2013, we entered into a lease agreement with Cameron LNG for their facility. Included with that agreement were letters of credit that were required to be maintained, that ratcheted down over a period of time. Cameron LNG has requested a reduction of that. They are a very credit-worthy company. And as Dan mentioned a few minutes ago, they have investors from Sempra, Mitsui, Mitsubishi, and NYK, all very solid companies. Their rating is A by S&amp;P, A3 by Moody's, and A minus by Fitch, all very credit-worthy investment grade. So what Cameron LNG has requested is a reduction of their letter of credit from, on one track is 25 million, on track 8A, it's 8 million. They've asked to reduce it to 4 million, and staff is recommending that.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept submission 2021-017, authorizing the executive director to amend the ground lease agreements with Cameron LNG to allow for a reduction in the amount of the required letters of credit.
Move by Mr. Darbone, seconded by Mr. Easton. Any discussion?
Carl, I'd like to just make one comment here. You know, obviously, I circled the motion, but I just wanted to make a comment. Clearly, I recognize y'all's $10 billion-plus investment into the community. But I also want to cite y'all for something that I recognized pretty quickly, that y'all also give back very philanthropically to the community, and I appreciate that. That's not going unnoticed.
Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify, the reduction is to the amount, it still would be to an amount of $4 million.
That's correct.
Okay, no other discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carried. Submission 2021-18, authorizing the district to enter into a professional service agreement for construction management at-risk pre-construction services with Cajun Industries LLC.
Yes, Mr. President. As you all are aware, Hurricane Laura badly damaged train sheds four, five, and six. Earlier this year, our Director of Engineers, Nick Pistello, issued a statement of qualifications, advertised for a statement of qualifications. We received 11 submittals. It is for a pre-construction services for a Seymour project, and the process is fairly regimented, spelled out by state statute. We had a committee of five members that reviewed the proposals that were submitted. They narrowed it down to three. And by the way, all 11 were outstanding companies, but they narrowed it down to three. They asked three to come in and do presentations. And from those presentations, staff is recommending Cajun Construction for the Seymour project.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Dixon moves.
Give it to her. She said it.
Okay. Ms. McLeary?
Make a motion to accept, to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Mr. Dixon, second. Any discussion?
Just want to clarify, I believe the motion says Cajun Industries.
Yeah, I said Cajun Construction. I mean Cajun Industries.
The Seymour project, the way that the process is done, you have staff and you have outside independent?
That's correct.
That review?
We had an outside engineer and outside construction contractor.
And then three staff?
And three staff.
Any other questions? No other questions. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carried. Submission 2021-019, approving the NOAA ports' operation and maintenance agreement.
Yes, Mr. President. In 2007, I believe it is, Congress provided funding for the equipment and the initial, first year's operation and maintenance on a ports system. The ports system is an acronym for, we see, physical, oceanographic, real-time system. At that point, we installed, and I say we, the equipment was installed, the port began collecting from the pilots a fee, which is collected from the vessels. We were acting as agent and were paying that fee to NOAA. The pilots had requested a secondary meter, and by the way, these meters measure things like air gap, salinity, wave action, barometric pressure, things such as that, that are really vital for the pilots. This is going to be a redundant meter that will provide really just more reliable information for the pilots. There's no cost to the port, essentially because the fee is collected by the vessels, which is paid to the pilots, and then, as again, as I mentioned, remitted to us, and then we pay NOAA from that. I'll gladly try to answer any questions you have.
Have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Dixon, we approve submission 2021-019, that will approve NOAA's ports' operation and maintenance agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Dixon moves. Ms. Lorenz, he's second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carried. Submission 2021-020, authorizing the executive director to prepare and submit an application to the Port Construction and Development Priority Program for the implementation of Port Improvement Project. Provide for the necessary documentation of the need for the port improvement and provide all other matters in connection therewith.
I think you pretty much just took the words out of my mouth.
That's what you're going to do, huh?
So essentially, this is a part of the Port Priority Program. We're applying for funding. The Port Priority Program is a merit-based system, so you've got to provide, you have to meet certain thresholds and ratios for the Port Priority funding to provide funding for the project. And as part of the process, we submit it to you for approval, and then we submit it to Port Priority, and it's compared to other ports in the state, other projects that they have. And we're going to be requesting $15 million towards the four, five, and six train shed birth project.
I have a motion.
Make a motion to accept our petition 2021-20, authorizing the executive director to prepare and submit an application to Louisiana Port Construction Development Priority Program for the implementation of a port improvement project, providing for the necessary documentation of the need for the port improvement and providing for all other matters in connection with it.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Easton, seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any questions? No questions. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carried. Submission 2021-021, accepting the proposal and entering into a contract with B&amp;J Incorporated for the industrial canal waterfront repairs and amending the capital budget.
Yes, Mr. President. After Hurricane Laura and Delta, Moffett Nickel performed a waterfront damage assessment at several of our facilities. One of them was the industrial canal. We issued an RFP for the repairs to the revetment. The best value came back as B&amp;J. We're recommending B&amp;J at a total cost of $249,000, and that includes a contingency. And it's for revetment work and fender system at the industrial canal. Nick, did I cover everything?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve submission 2021-021, accepting the proposal and entering into a contract with B&amp;J, Inc., for the industrial canal waterfront repairs and amending the capital budget.
Second. Mr. Darbone moves. Mr. Prudham, second. Any discussion?
So, Nick, this is going to be included in our FEMA request, this full amount, $249,000?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
And if it is approved, it will be at 90%?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carried. Submission 2021-022, accepting the proposal and entering into a contract with Emmett C. Oil Field Services for the BT1 dock repairs and amending the capital budget.
Yes, Mr. President. Also, as part of the Moffett Nickel waterfront damage assessment, there were damages to the BT1 fender pile, catwalk, and the crane stops. Part of that assessment that they did, we estimate the repairs. We issued actually an RFP. The best value proposal came back from M&amp;C at a cost of $237,000, and that also includes a contingency.
Have a motion.
Make a motion to approve submission 2021-022, authorizing to accept the best value proposal from M&amp;C Well Field Services for BT1 dock repairs in the amount of $216,000 plus contingency of $21,000.
Second. Motion by Ms. McLeary, seconded by Mr. Easton. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carried. April 2021 financial briefing note.
Cameron? Yes, sir. Starting with the operating statement for the month ended April 30th, 2021, the port generated revenues of $2.8 million, resulting in a $200,000 unfavorable variance due primarily to lower-than-expected petroleum coat. That was also offset by higher-than-expected bay right and rutile, primarily due to timing. Expenses for the month ended were $3.5 million, resulting in a $200,000 favorable variance, again due to lower pet coat tonnage and partially offset by additional expenses due to the higher bay rate. Non-operating revenues and expenses were $400,000, resulting in a nominal unfavorable variance. That was due to lower-than-expected interest income, but we also received some revenue sharing funds that were budgeted in prior months. EBITDA was $400,000, and we generated $700,000 in cash flow. Under the balance sheet, unrestricted cash investments decreased $16.2 million due primarily to hurricane expenses, property insurance paid, and our self-insurance retention reserve, which was moved to our restricted cash. So on that side, restricted cash increased $7.2 million, and that's because of funds being held on behalf of the public-private partnership as well as those self-insured retention reserve funds. Trade accounts receivables increased $2.1 million. That's again primarily due to the 75-25 FEMA split. Fixed assets increased $6.4 million due to the completion of setup of the Mobile Harbor Crane. Construction in progress decreased $900,000 due to the completion of the setup, but which was partially offset by the ongoing hurricane projects in progress. Current liabilities decreased $2.6 million due to hurricane-related payments, and long-term debt decreased $1.2 million due to principal payment on outstanding bonds. Questions?
Congratulations on your marriage.
Thank you.
Cameron got married a week ago.
Congratulations. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move into department reports. Administration, Finance, Security, Cameron?
Yes, sir. Our main priority right now is working with the auditors on the year-end audit, which will be presented at next month's meeting. We also received a dividend check from the Louisiana Workers Compensation Corporation in the amount of around $177,000. Also received $1.1 million last week from the Corps, leading to the energy port funding under the Water Resources Development Act. Any questions?
Questions. Thank you. Navigation, Shannon?
Two points from my report. First of all, we're coming to the end of our funding discussions for the Corps of Engineers. We have one remaining in D.C. Office of Management Budget. They're very wrapped up and still trying to get the president's budget details out. So we continue to try and set up a meeting with them, and we'll, and the car group is working on that. We had our meeting with the New Orleans District Senior Staff last week. We've got a request in for a meeting with the Mississippi Valley Division Senior Staff, which is in process. They'll give us some dates when the industry can meet with them. In my report, I also talk about the regional dredging contract that the Corps has issued. This is a pilot program that the Corps of Engineers has been testing out for the past several years, where they combine various ports, and they issue dredging contracts that will allow the dredge to be assigned to various channels. This year, for the first time, they've combined, they've included Calcasieu in that process, and they have combined us with the Mississippi River. In the past, the Corps has, when needed, when there is an emergency on the Mississippi River, they have taken dredges from the Calcasieu and money from the Calcasieu and diverted it over to the Mississippi River. Industry is concerned that this may be a formalization of this old program. We broke them of that habit several years ago, and they haven't done it in a number of years. But we're keeping our eye on this. And during our discussion with the district last week on funding, we brought this up as a point and advised them that they can't take our money and our dredges. That's the short story. Other than that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
When you said that item too, that you were, they were no longer going to take any more money from us for the dredging, what did they say to you?
They said they didn't intend to.
Oh.
They didn't intend to years ago either.
But they did it, huh?
But if an emergency came up on the Mississippi River, which a number of us refer to as Pougha River, if emergencies come up there, because it's so big and it has impact on so much of the nation, they can take money from wherever they want to, and they have.
When that happens, is that money ever, ever replaced?
No, sir. The Corps has a fixed budget.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering whether as future budget requests get made, does that get remembered, or it just falls off the table?
That is hard to say. In the past five years, we've done extraordinarily well in the funding. We had like, if I'm remembering the numbers correctly, $250 million. A big slug of that came in fiscal year 18, when we got $115 in supplemental funds. It's hard to say whether or not it's remembered. We have been treated a lot better recently than we have 10 years ago.
If I could ask a question. So does that work in reverse as well? Because we've had some emergencies on the Calcasieu. So can we assume then, with this regional dredging contract, that if we, heaven forbid, but if we did have an emergency, that money from the Mississippi River would drift over here to help us?
They say they're not going to take our money and give it to the Mississippi River. I presume they will say they're not going to take the river's money and give it to us. But that's just a guess on my part.
Pretty good guess.
Any other questions? Thank you. Operations, Todd?
Let's see, right now, in port, BT1 is finishing up a bulk coke ship, and we've got a ship at city docks that's trying to finish up lowly milled rice for USDA. It's been delayed quite a bit with all the weather, and we're doing a liquids transfer. This past month, we've done two calcine ships, several rutile barges, a coke ship, a lumen hydrate barge, sodium hydroxide- tri, or aluminum hydrate barge, sodium hydroxide ship, project cargo ship, and a wind component ship. Going forward into June, right now on the books, we have a coke ship, two coke ships, a calcine ship. We have another USDA bag ship that should be coming in on the 29th, and a large lumber shipment, probably one of our largest lumber shipments that we've had. You have any questions?
Have any idea what our tonnage is running compared to?
It depends on which, you know, with pet coke is down, certain commodities are down, some are up. I mean, I could be more than happy to give you a tonnage breakdown.
Anybody else? I noticed in your report, you participated in a conference call with John Martin, Martin on the strategic plan, maybe that's for Ricky, but does anybody have an update on where that plan is at or what's happening?
Yeah, they're working on the strategic plan. He said that he was going to maybe come this week or next, not come, we would have a call this week or next week to give us another update. Chuck, do you have anything further?
Put it together.
Chuck is working with John Martin on the strategic plan as well.
Yeah, he's put together the latest summary of where he's at, and then he's going to schedule a phone call, and he said basically after he goes over to the staff, he'd be ready to make a presentation to the board soon.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have any idea, like, at what point in the process he would be at that stage?
Definitely a little over 50%, but I think he's, I'd probably summarize it somewhere in maybe 75, 80%.
Wow.
He's got a lot of the legwork done, as well as we've done most of our legwork. He's now trying to put it all together in organized format for presentation purposes. So most of the research and legwork and actual visible work is done. Now it's a matter of putting it into a presentation first, and he wants to get input from the staff and the board before he finalizes.
Thank you. No other questions. Thank you, Todd. Cargo and trade development, Ferrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're currently working with a Pittsburgh-based company looking to receive and distribute rice who last that palletized on truck in and out. Sorry about that. And they're looking to start with about 300 loads and then increase from there. Also working with a Mississippi-based company to export logs and wood chips to South America. It would be a three-year deal, up to 500,000 logs per year. Also.
Not tons.
No, logs. It's logs.
It's logs.
Yes.
It's tons.
Yeah, it's logs, yeah. And also a Louisiana-based company, aggregate company, looking to start a transload facility on port property, transload and aggregate from railroad to truck, and they're looking for a five to 10-year deal also.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ferrance. Engineer, maintenance, Nick?
Hi, Mr. President. In addition to my normal report, I never really list out our maintenance projects and how maintenance is going. Just wanted to give a little kudos to those guys as well. I know the ice storm was a big impact on us, and basically every wet fire system we had in the maintenance department has really stepped forward and managed repairs in-house as much as possible with inspections following. And additionally, just every maintenance department, we're just working hard around the clock, and railroad, I mean, everybody knows the storm we had last Monday, and my guys were out there and working through it. But additionally, I wanted to let CSR speak and give an update on the FEMA projects and where we stand on all the hurricane repair projects.
Good evening. So far, we're, you see the handout I gave to you guys, the bar graphs is filling up as we move along. It's been a challenging disaster. First, we had Laura, and six weeks later, we had Delta, Hurricane Delta, and now we've had the ice storm that Nick just mentioned. It's, the ice storm itself is approved for category B only, emergency protective measures, but what we've done is we've participated in, the state has worked with FEMA to put together damages, like permanent damages, so we can get that also declared. I think the number I got from Nick was around $120,000, and I know the hospital themselves had about $800,000, and I, people I spoke to told me that that's what the threshold number is, so hopefully, we also get the permanent damage for the ice storm declared, which will help the port. Some of the projects that we're working from, you see, the biggest hurdle we've had to overcome, or we're trying to overcome right now, is the insurance. Adjusters' report hasn't been received yet, the final one. Management here is pushing them hard every day, trying to get it for us. If we don't get that report first, we cannot submit the projects because they will zero out the projects until they receive the full amount of the insurance deduction that the port received. Another big hurdle is this disaster, I call it the virtual disaster. Because of COVID, FEMA is doing almost all their positions from their office or home offices, so it's been very challenging for us to get the site inspections done. To date, there's not been one FEMA person that's set foot on port property. It's, so it's taken a little longer to get the site inspections done, we have to schedule them, and they have limited personnel. Obviously, they're working a bunch of other disasters, but it hasn't deterred us. We keep moving forward. You can see the projects on the second page that we have ready to go in as soon as the insurance issue is solved. There's some other big projects right below at the bottom of the page. Another 48 million that are going in very soon. They're real close as soon as inspections are done. I've included a damage inventory listing for you. It's still a little north of 100 million worth of damages for the port. And the last page we have, you'll see we're solidly in phase three, the scoping and costing. My team is doing all the scope and costing that we can, and FEMA is doing the validation on that, and as soon as they're done with, we get the insurance issue solved, the projects will all get submitted, and they'll come back for phase four, which is the final reviews and applicant signature. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any idea when the insurance is going to come forward with the final?
I had a call with them on Friday. The adjusters were working with the underwriters. The holdup is in London right now with the underwriter, underwriter side. I guess the good news is, instead of just 25 million, the second payment, we're going to get 25 million, 500,000, most likely. It's an increase of about 500,000. There's a little bit of a, you know, the adjusters feel like the 500,000 is going to, is due, and I think the underwriters feel as though they're not convinced yet, but Cameron, did I cover everything?
Yep.
But we had a call with them on Friday. They know we need to get it in, not only the adjusters' report from a FEMA perspective, but the cash in for the second layer.
Essentially, you have roughly 55 million dollars of projects on the threshold as soon as the insurance is resolved.
That's correct. And I'm also working with the, he's the manager of the insurance review queue over at the CRC, is where they review all the projects, it goes through mitigation, insurance, EHP, and they do the CEF estimate validation. So I'm trying to work out an alternate solution also, because, you know, we've been expecting this for a while, and it keeps, we keep getting it delayed, so we're not just sitting still is what I'm trying to say. If we can come up with an agreement with the insurance on, we can push these projects in. We just don't want them to come back as zero-dollar projects that will not be beneficial to the port.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all? Be you, Nick?
Yes.
Lobbyist reports, anything to add there? Okay, any other matters need to come before the board? If not, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Ms. McLaury moves. Mr. Darbone, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carried. We're going to do executive session in the conference room if no one has any objection to the board.